A time is 6:30. I now call this meeting to order. Good evening and welcome. This is the first session of a court-ordered special town meeting. Please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance led by Andy Fitch of the Board of Selectmen. Tonight's meeting is to review and discuss the warrant regarding the Ashland Electric Substation. This will be voted on by ballot on Tuesday, May 6. The article may be amended tonight with some restrictions, such as the intent of the article cannot be changed. Please be sure you've checked in with the supervisors of the checklist and received your photo card. And please turn down your cellphones. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,200,000 for the purpose of repairing the Ashland Electric Substation and to authorize the issuance of not more than 2.2 million of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, and to authorize the Select Board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity and other terms thereof, and to authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend federal, state, or other aid, if any, which may be available for said project, with the amount of such bonds or notes to be reduced by any grant, aid, or other funding received for the project, and to comply with all laws applicable to said project, and further to authorize the Select Board to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto. It is anticipated that this bond will be repaid through user fees. A three-fifth ballot vote will be required for approval. This was recommended by the Select Board, 5 to 0. It was also recommended by the Budget Committee.
We have an amendment?
Legalists advised us to make an amendment. The amendment will read, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $2,200,000 for the purpose of repairing the Ashland Electric Substation and to authorize the issuance of $2.2 million worth of bonds or notes under and in compliance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33. To authorize the Selectmen to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity and other terms thereof. To authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend federal, state, and other aid, if any, which may be available for said project, with the amount of such bonds, notes, to be reduced by any grant." Okay, I think I just messed that up.
No, you're good. You're still good.
"Aid or other funding received for the project and to comply with all laws applicable to said project, and further to authorize the Select Board to take any other action or to pass any other vote relative thereto, without impairing the general obligation nature of the bonds or notes issued to finance the project. It is anticipated that bonds will be repaid through user fees."
Any discussion on the amendment?
Craig had an idea about how this substation could be rebuilt in a series of phases. I'd like to know if there was any more investigation into that possibility.
Anyone know who could address that, Craig? Do you have?
To get through the warrant first, that we can change the warrant after we approve the First Amendment.
Any discussion on the amendment? If not, we will vote. Those in favor of amending as read by Andy? Those opposed? Passed. So, did you have something?
My name is Sue Harville, live on Highland Street. I would like to make a motion to restrict reconsideration on this Article 1 pursuant to RSA 40:10.
Have a second? Any discussion on the motion to restrict reconsideration? Those in favor of restricting reconsideration of this article? Those in favor of restricting reconsideration pursuant to RSA 40:10? Please show your hand cards. Those who oppose reconsideration? The ayes have it to amend it. So, even though we're restricting reconsideration... All right, I'm still on a learning curve here. So, Bob, do you want?
I rise to approve the motion, make a motion to approve the warrant article as amended.
Okay, do a second.
Now, the vote we took was just to accept the amendment the way it was done, but now this will actually amend the warrant article, so with the amendment that we approved.
All those in favor again of accepting the warrant article as amended? Please signify.
Could we explain what was going on?
Yeah, please. I'm sorry.
Would you explain, our town council, explain what's going on? Because if we approve this amendment, you're approving it without any discussion.
Did we have discussion?
But approving is the most important.
So, the article's been moved, and this is a vote on moving the article, then the article will be adopted as is. There's no further discussion.
No further discussion.
Because we had discussion after we made the amendment. We asked for that.
Yes, so that's about the amendment, and then the amendment was adopted. So, the article is now, the article as amended. So, now, if there's a motion on the floor to consider the article as amended, and that motion passes, then we're done.
Which means no discussion on the article is taking on the floor.
We can still have discussion about, about the article.
So, there's more questions?
Right.
If...
We had discussion before we brought them in.
Chad, if you'd like to open into discussion, set the motion aside for now and open into discussion.
All right, so, again, a learning curve, sorry. So, if you have any questions and discussion, let's bring them up now about the amendment. The warrant article as amended.
So, we need to rescind that motion?
Why do we have to rescind?
No, the moderator can say the motion.
Onions, Mary Ann Dorso, and then 40 Highland. I'm not sure if this is a question about the amendment, it's just a general question, which is, I know you referenced that the substation would be repaired. Is that meaning a rebuild of the substation? And if so, would the rebuild include growth for the future? And if the answer is yes, it would anticipate growth for the future, could you give us a sense of what the service, what the existing service is, and what the service would then be if it were done?
I'm sorry, did you repeat your name?
Yeah. Sorry.
Mary Ann Dorso. You're welcome.
Is that something you can address then?
My name's Harry Gallion. I'm the electric supervisor at Ashland. That question is easy to answer. We have antiquated equipment in the substation, which is definitely in dire need of replacement, and there's enough capacity in that substation with the new breakers and new wiring to handle, much more than what we're handling now.
What about the future?
That includes the future, much more room for expansion in there. We're running about 25% to 35% on transformers.
Brandon Smith Hill. I'm just wondering how long it's going to take to do the repairs once they get started or we get the money?
We were told four weeks. Four weeks.
Chad.
Why don't you have the month's word?
Yeah. He's, he's...
I think he's coming.
Okay, you are?
Chad Streeter.
Okay, and you're from the company that's going to do the repairs?
We've submitted a proposal.
The microphone?
Get to the microphone, please.
Thank you.
First of all, he's not a town resident or registered voter, so does anyone object to his speaking?
No.
No, we want to.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I turn it around? I work for a company called I.C. Reden Suns. We're a utility contractor. We're the first utility contractor in the state of New Hampshire. We've been doing business for 70 years. We do substations for New Hampshire Electric Co-op, EverSource. We're in the process of helping Woodsville install a new substation transformer. They're a municipality, much like yourself. Coming from Raneton, New Hampshire, another small town, our goal is to try to help you guys, obviously, not break the bank, try to do an affordable rebuild in a timely manner. As far as when, when switchgear can be replaced, the lead time on that could be up to six months. The emergency repairs that we have done so far, that was in response to your outage, we have one substation up and running. We just tested new cables, four-off cables, it was running off a one-oh, which is a much smaller capacity conductor. I put together a few photos, but I wasn't sure what the process was here, so... If you could look up just into there and just share on that. Yes, I'm sorry. I wish I had prepared more to come in here today, but it was kind of a short notice type of thing, but I'd be welcome if anyone had any questions, I'd be welcome to answer, so... That's my name.
Hi. I'm Amanda Lout. I live on North Ashland Drive. The Woodsville project that you just mentioned about the substation, is, does Woodsville have its own electric company, or is that part of the co-op?
Woodsville is exactly like Ashland. It's a municipality.
It has its own electric company?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just pretty loud. I just want to say thank you for getting us up and running within 17 hours last night, because it was my understanding, because I know a lot of people in the electrical world, that they anticipated we could be out for three weeks, and that we could be running on generators that could cost this town an extra nominal amount of money, and I just want to thank you.
Like I said, 70 years, so, we're big on transparency. So, like I told Harry, if this gets approved, we could still work out where, you know, we're working with the municipality to try to save dollars, so you guys are not paying it out of your pocket, so...
What he's saying is my guys would be working with him, saving that money.
(Inaudible).
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, are you sure you want? Please.
Yeah, you go first.
Okay. Again, it was mentioned that it could be done in stages instead of all at once, you know, and I realize sometimes a job is better off just wiping it out, do it all at once, walk away. But in this case, you have one transformer that works, so can you effectively work on the other transformer and keep the one running and then switch off? So, as to lower the cost, or is this going to cost more to do it like that?
The biggest problem right now is your 15, what they would call 15,000-volt switchgear, which is, if you have ever went to your substation, and you're looking from the municipality building towards the substation, to the right-hand side, you'll see a small building. Inside that small building is the lower voltage switchgear, what they would call it, and it's all internal, and it really hasn't been maintained for a long time. And normal maintenance intervals for when you first get switchgear is like a three-to-five year maintenance schedule, and then after 10 years, you're going down to like two-to-three year maintenance schedule. And in cases like this, I think there hasn't been much of a maintenance schedule at all. And like, like Harry said, it's a standard way of gear. So, the biggest dollar amount that you'd be spending would be replacing that gear as a whole. I mean, just to replace the gear alone is over $800,000, just to get it shipped. So, that doesn't include installing anything like that. The goal would be to have external gear. The gear that you have now, the arc flash reading inside the building is not safe really for people to operate energized, which is a, you know, kind of a hazard. Just trying to say it politely. We did write the proposal in stages, and as in stages, obviously, you have to have the big dollar out, which is, you know, the switchgear coming in, but then we'd be cutting over circuits in stages, and the proposal doesn't include replacing the transformers, but just maintaining the transformers. The transformers together, you have two, two good transformers that you could, in time, save up money and replace one at a time. Your transformers have load tap changers, which a lot of transformers don't, so that can step up and lower your voltage depending on the load. Newer or different types, styles of gear, you have to have separate regulators, and, you know, that's just another dollar item. So, our first stage would be to install switches throughout the distribution system on the power lines themselves. So, if you lost a circuit breaker inside the substation, you'd be able to tie it on the outside of the substation. So, you know, you lose, you lose a breaker in a cube, you could go up to the line and throw a switch and carry it with another circuit. So, that would be our first step. That way, it's risk mitigation for outage, the outage management. And, you know, EverSource and New Hampshire Electric Co-op have been big on that with reclosers, but being a small municipality, I think you could do it with manual operator switches.
So, does the state have an inspector that comes around every so often to make sure the systems are being taken care of? Or is this just one of those local things where, okay, you guys make sure it's running?
I'm not sure how municipalities are regulated, but the public utilities commission regulates your power companies like EverSource here until New Hampshire Electric will offer it.
Right, yeah, no, no, they regulate, I understand that. They send an inspector around, just to make sure that the systems are ready, okay, and don't end up in a condition that we found this one.
For the utilities, yeah. I'm not sure about municipalities.
Okay, thank you.
Olive Cunningham, Ego Street. If in fact, there's been several proposals presented to the town for alternative energy, waste-to-energy, solar, different opportunities the town may have, if in fact the town were to choose to move forward on a more productive, green energy, how does that affect the $2.2 million that we've already spent at this stage? Is any of that equipment still relevant or just obsolete at that point?
No, the substation here would be, it would be fine, no matter what you guys say.
So, it would convert to solar or waste-to-energy?
Yep, because the solar would be like a distributed generation.
The generated part of it needs to be done regardless of how the energy is coming in?
Yep.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the electric supervisor a question. When we were looking for quotes on this, this reconstruction for the substation, this was the lowest bid, I'm assuming? By far. What was the other bids? The other bid, one was 6.2 million, five-point-eight million, and five-point-seven. So, thank you very much. That's what you're looking at. But they, they wanted to do it all themselves. They wouldn't let us assist them and help them, so...
I have a question, Amanda Lout. Both to you, Harry, as well as the BOS. How staffed are we with the electric company? And my, my question is stemming from, do we have a lineman on staff? And, once this is redone and upgraded, you were talking about how poorly maintained the, do I call it the current system, what we've got now, how poorly maintained it was? Do we have the staff to maintain that? Will there need to be additional hirings? And do we have the lineman in place to service this?
I can answer that question. I'm setting two of my gentlemen to substation maintenance school this year. The money's already been allocated for them. They'll come back certified to work in the substation and breakers, and yes, we'll be able to take care of it. And also, you'll be following the national standard 70E, which was standards for electrical safety. All the equipment will be done according to that.
Do we have a lineman?
We have four linemen.
Thank you. Brandon, again, what is your fallback position, having, you know, seen big bonds fail because the town votes it down, mostly because of lack of communication? What's the fallback position? I mean, clearly, this is something that needs to be done. What is your communication plan to make sure that people totally understand pros and cons of this system?
We can't hear you back there.
I'm sorry, I just asked what the fallback position was, should this bond fail, if the town votes it down, because we've seen them vote down large bonds before. And, and clearly, this is a critical issue. We need a, we need a Plan B.
So, as some of you know, we've had questions about our rate study. That is being worked on. As for fallback position, we have something unique happening. For the first time since 2019, we have poll fees coming in. Worst-case scenario, we're going to piecemeal this thing. We're going to do what we can, when we can, and we'll have to go after it later. I fully expect that the substation is going to get rebuilt. It may just take a while. I would just suggest that, knowing the danger that's existing in this power plant, the way it exists right now, but if people were there, this is a must-do, not a maybe-do. We can't take the risk of having somebody get killed over there. And I have seen that, that substation, and it's, it's probably 50, 75 years old, and everything is antiquated, it has to go. We have to do this.
Save Towns 54 Spitzel Road. I just have a couple of questions and a comment. This is a very nice job. It answers a whole lot of questions, so thank you very much. The price of 129-something per 750 kilowatt-hours, am I right in assuming that does not include the upcoming rate increase? From the rates? It doesn't say so in here. Not...
I haven't seen that.
It's a handoff that's on the town, okay.
So, I know we're doing a rate study, and if there's going to be a rate increase due to that study, that's not included in here? due to that study, that's not included in here?
No, it is not. The rate study is to make sure that we had the correct rate when we changed the rates in January. We hope we did, but we have questions, so we're double checking.
Okay, because the rates should include operational and capital expenses. And that's been lacking in the past, so we want to make sure that's done. The other thing is that it says in here that there's $170,000 kind of cushion in there to go to reserves for the electric department, which is definitely needed. I'm not sure how you came up with that number, there's no capital budget in here. There's only an operational budget, and there's no CIP in here, so I'm not sure what you're basing that number on.
And I'm not either.
Okay.
To answer the question about if we should or if we can't, you heard Chad say, there is no safe distance for my guys to switch those, that switchgear. There is no safe distance. They have, it has to be eight feet to switch those high voltage breakers. There's no safe distance for them in there. I stopped them from going in there and switching right. If we go black, turn the switches on and then turn the transformer on outside, because they cannot switch them gears inside.
I totally agree, but we just need to make sure that the rest of the townspeople, this is a small section, that everybody knows that when they're voting.
If you have to see one of them big breakers blowing up like I have.
Our son-in-law's an electrician, so I've heard all about it. But I just want to make sure that the people who aren't here get this information.
Any other questions? I just want to make a note too, for years, I know one of the issues a lot of people have is why wasn't fun, why were funds never set aside for repair and maintenance? For years, it was, we were given the impression that you couldn't actually have excess funds set aside in the utility company. However, we are aware now that we can start having it for repair and maintenance.
I know that we enjoy lower rates with the Ashland Electric Company. However, we're putting an awful lot of money into the infrastructure of the Ashland Electric Company. And I want to know if you have done any studies that have hard figures on what the advantages financially are with going forward with 2.2 million to redo our substation versus joining the co-op?
I was under the understanding if the co-op took over, they would have to rebuild the substation anyway because it's unsafe.
But how would that affect your bill?
Can I answer her? I'm talking to the co-op. They said, oh yeah, they'd buy it, but then you'd get an 8 cent surcharge on your kilowatts per hour to rebuild it, because they'll have to rebuild it too. And you'll have to pay for it on your rates.
And what's the added expense going to be of having these licensed, certified, they're going off to certification school, you know, to work this? Is that going to add our annual cost on our electric bills of having perhaps more, certainly better certified, more skilled people? Cost more money? And I'm just wondering, you know, if we look at our rate and yet if we consider mathematically everything that it's taking to get that, if it's balancing out in our favor?
I'll answer your question. It's only going to cost me $12,000 to send them to school to get certified. It costs me $3,200 just to have them check one breaker and certify a breaker.
For consultants to come in.
For consultants to come in. That's to have them come here and check it, that's not repairing it. If it needs repairs or adjustments. So it's worth the money to send it to school.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Yeah, Nina Barnes, Thompson Street. I guess my general sense is in looking at comparative rates, even with whatever costs have get added because of this change, we're still going to be paying less than through other companies. And I think that's a really key factor. It may raise things somewhat, but I don't think it's going to raise them to the other company's charge. And secondly, as, you know, someone said to me before the meeting, Ashland Electric has one client, and it's us. And so, power goes out, we're, as a small town, we're not going to be way down on the list of repairs, which I think could take, you know, weeks if not months when there's a really bad outage. I have been blown away, not like the substation, that they had power up and running in such a short time. And I just, I really not want to lose that.
Not to bore all you to death here, but I wanted to let you know what I found out. A friend of mine sent me this, and he's a customer down in Salem, New Hampshire, and they're Eversource. When you're a customer of Eversource or the co-op, you have the right under state law to pick another provider. And he happened to choose Liberty Electric, which we see this ads on TV about how inexpensive they are. Well, this gentleman had, and I'd be glad to show this to anybody who wants to see it, this is a copy of his electric bill. He had total electric charges $137.
For how many kilowatt?
Wait a minute, I'm not done yet. He got 1,638 kilowatt hours. Custom charge, $18.67. Disponation charge, $101.18. Stranded cost, $0.61. Systems benefit charge, $12.38. Transmission charge, $44. That added $176 to his $137 for the electricity, for a total of $314.12 for one month. This is what you get when you have the big guys. Ashland Electric, only extra charge you see on your bill from Ashland Electric that I owe is that $10 charge for the meter. You're paid for the electricity that you're getting. I just wanted to make sure people understood why does the electric company is so important to this town? It provides us with a resource, the resource that will attract commercial businesses at some point. Commercial businesses want low rates. Thank you for putting up a meeting.
I guess as a follow-up, my original question. Has you, have you done any hard studies comparing what the cost would be for us to join the co-op? I'm not talking about the cost in Salem with another electric company. I'm talking about what it would cost the users in Ashland to join the co-op and what that expense would be on our bills fixing the substation versus us, 2.2 million fixing our substation and having more qualified, skilled people that are maintaining it regularly? Have you done that study cost?
No.
Bob Baker, 319 Highland Street. I move to end this discussion. We're not going anywhere.
All those in favor of any discussion, raise your hand. All those opposed to terminating discussion? All right, so now we'll go back to the original motion, which Bob Latron made to accept the warrant article as amended. All those in favor of accepting? All those in favor of accepting the warrant article as amended, please raise your hand. All those opposed?